Okay, on to the minutes from the January 26th workshop meeting. And motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Brent, second?
I second that.
Thank you, Declan. Any edits, comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Wonderful, okay. Now, we are on to regular business.
Thank you.
Give me a moment. So the first item of business is police department cell phones. The police department, the sergeant in particular, uses his personal cellphone for village And most of you know he's available 24/7. And it really is appropriate for the village to be supplying him with a cellphone. And they, the police officers do communicate with each other on their cell phones. And so I am proposing that we get three cell phones for the police department. And I am looking for my sheet that has the cost. It's in my pile. I believe it's $40 a month. Here it is. There's a public safety plan. And this is Verizon. And there are free phone options that include an iPhone 12 and a Samsung S22. But the public safety plan, the benefit to the public safety plan is these accounts get preferred service in times of high network use. So if there's an emergency or some sort of event, if you will, these plans get preferential. They get service first, if you will, which makes sense for the police department. So it is $39.99 a month times three, so that would be $1,400, basically $1,440 per year. I guess I'm proposing, so I'm proposing that we proceed with getting these three cell phones. Do I have a second?
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Is it, are they only going to full-time officers? Or are they going to be kept and sort of, are three cell phones enough? Because we have more officers than that.
And that is a good question. So one of them will go to the sergeant. The other will go to Officer Sterrett. And I believe the third will be available for, possibly for the part-time. You're right. What I'd like to do is to start with three and see how that works. This is what the sergeant asked for. So it seemed to me, rather than start with everyone having one, because even if, even if we did get one for everyone, I wouldn't get one for all of the part-timers. I'd probably get one and then they could use it when they're on duty. So it seemed logical to me to start with the three that the sergeant requested.
And is the model of the phone that you're proposing to get, is that a smartphone that we can add an app to?
Yes.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
And I'll second your motion, then I'll have a question.
Okay, ask away.
This will come from budget line 3120.41, which is equipment lease and maintenance.
That sounds right.
All right. And now, it'll begin when, this fiscal year or next fiscal year?
I would, I know that we have, we have funds in two different places that we can put into that budget line. One is we have $30,000 for repairing the roof, and we haven't started that work. And the other is we do have a line that is for fund balance. And so I think we have about $25,000 in that one, so we could take it from either place.
We're about 60% on that particular budget line.
And we can, perhaps we have enough in the budget line item. I would, I would start it now.
Yeah, we have a balance of $4,165.62, according to as of February 10th.
Then we're, then we're good to go.
All right.
So what, are we mid-February? So I would imagine March, we'd get started. Right, so actually the amount would be?
$1,400 per year, it'd be less than that.
Right, so it's March, April, May, so it'd be three months. Yeah, it'd be less than that. So yeah, we can cover it from that line item. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Okay, the next item is ADP time records. I believe we have spoken about, ADP has, currently we are keeping track of people's time, including vacation time, sick time, personal time manually. And the time records are, the time clock is time cards. We use physical time cards, people punch in and punch out. ADP has a, has a program, I think they call it Time, Time Keep? I forget what it's called. I have it written down. But, and it's, it's basically a, it's basically an app where you go in, you punch in your code, which says, okay, I'm here. And then when you leave, you punch in your code to say, I've now left. And so it's an automatic thing, so that the time, the worked time is automatically calculated. And it is then reviewed by supervisors. So for example, the police department, the individual officers would put in their time, and then the sergeant would review that. And he would either approve it or make adjustments. And then it would go to, and then it would go to the next level. Highway department, it would be Jake Smith who would review that and go to that. I would review the village. And then once it's all together, I would, I would look at it and say, okay, go. And then it would go to Ray, who does the, who does the payroll. The benefit to that is, is that it will save an enormous amount of time for Sergeant Hillenbrand, our highway foreman Jake, as well as Ray, who takes the individual cards and has to calculate each pay period. The reason why I brought it up today is because I originally understood that people would go to their computer and they would log in and say, here I am. But ADP has, they have two options, two other options that I think make a little more sense. They have a time clock where you can go and punch in, so that could replace the time card. And that would be great, except it costs, it's a rental cost. And the rental cost for three of them, we currently have one for the village, one for the police department, and one for the highway department. It would cost $5,400 a year to rent those three, which I thought was an outrageous amount of money. I thought I could buy several computers for that. The alternative is to, they have an app called ADP Kiosk. And it, so you can, we can get a tablet, a low-level, cheap tablet, and put the app on it and locate it in the same place where our current time clock is. And then everyone can just punch in there. And the cost of that app is based on the number of employees, not the number of locations. And that cost for the year is $936. And that seems like, yeah, $936. To me, it's, it's logical to put it in the same location where people are currently logging, clocking in and out. And it seemed much more reasonable in terms of cost. There's a tablet you can get from Amazon that costs $100. So we're going to start with that. And if that doesn't work out, we can go to the $200 model. But I did, given that it's cost, that I didn't realize we were going to have to incur, I wanted to bring that to the board. I do think that we will, that we will achieve ultimately the savings of time. And as we know, time is money. We will, we will save more than that amount of time where people have been dealing with compiling hours every pay period. So I don't know if I need a motion for that, or if I just?
I don't think so.
Want to give you guys an opportunity to ask questions.
So is that, is the pad secure? We have court in here sometimes, and I know the lawyers like to use, where we currently keep our time clock. So would they, would the tablet be secured somehow? And the second question followed would be, is there some kind of a password that each employee would enter so that their information is also secured?
Yes, so I'm going to answer your second question first. Each individual would have their own, they call it a PIN number. And so that identifies you. The other is each individual employee would also have a login to the, to an ADP, to their website, so that they can look at their individual information. So they can find out how many vacation days they have left, how many sick days they have left, et cetera. So they would be able to see their own, so each individual employee has their own account. And you can't log in, there's a, you could log in from your computer, but there is a restriction where, they call it geolocating, I think, or GI, anyway, there's a way to restrict. So if, for example, someone logs in, they're in Vermont, and they say, oh, I'm going to log in and say, I'm working, you can't do that. You have to be physically within the boundaries that we set up. So yes, so that's, that's how the individuals indicate that they're here. When someone makes a mistake or forgets to log out, it is possible for the administrator to make adjustments. And so I spoke with someone who actually manages their system, same, same system through ADP, and she'll get emails from people saying, oh, I forgot this, or I forgot to log out. And then, so the administrator can make adjustments after the fact. Relative to your first question, my thought was to have, first of all, the benefit to having the low-level tablet means it's less appealing to, to take. The other is I was thinking of seeing if Jake could make some sort of a case for us that we could attach to the wall, so that it's not that easy to just lift it. Like our time clock now, you could pull it off the wall, but that my thought was to create some sort of case, again, that would then tack it to the wall, so that it's not, you can't just pull it and walk away with it. And then the one upstairs is in the police department, and then the highway one, similar, it will be in their, in the town highway garage. And same thought was to have some sort of case that would be attached to something appropriate.
And all departments will be required to enter their time on this part?
Yes. And one of the other things, and we're working on that now, is when is the type of work you're doing? So for example, at the highway, sometimes they're working on water, sometimes they're working on highway, sometimes it's garbage. All of those different options are available to say, okay, I'm working here. Exactly how that works in terms of whether Monday morning, when they all come in, they clock in for garbage, and then when they're done with garbage, do they clock out of garbage and then into highway? I'm not sure how will work that. That may end up being Jake having to make those adjustments, like he does now. But for the police department, for example, we have town court, we have village court, we have?
SRO.
SRO, yeah. So all of those will be distinct categories that, that the officers can sign into as to what category of time they're working on, which means we will be able to get reports very easily as to where everybody's time is.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you. Okay, the next item that I wanted to bring up is related to the building department. I have spoken with our code enforcement officer, fire inspector, and zoning enforcement officer, Clark Kimball. So he has three jobs. And the work has, has increased over time. Clark is a part-time employee, so that means he's 20 hours a week. And in looking at the number of fire inspections that he, he is, he inspects all the apartments, he inspects the businesses, and those are all meant to be done annually. In terms of building permits, I just asked for a, a look at the numbers. We know that there are more building, you know, there's more building that's been going on, but from, just to take the last three years, 2020, there were 73 building permits. 2021, there were 96 building permits issued. In 2022, there were 107. And so each of those permits requires Clark to inspect and follow up, et cetera. So Clark has proposed that, that we look to hire a part-time zoning enforcement officer. We've had a number of complaints and a number, and so the zoning enforcement officer would be someone who would make sure that the signage is what it's supposed to be, to make sure that folks are following code as, as they've been directed to do. That does take a fair amount of time. And so I wanted to bring that to the board, to talk about that as a possibility. It would be a part-time position. I'm thinking 15 hours a week. The other benefit to that is it would give us some backup to Clark. Building inspectors are not easy to come by. And so if, if, if needed, that he, he or she, the zoning enforcement officer, could learn and become someone who could be a backup to Clark. So I wanted to bring that up to you all and ask what your thoughts are.
I think it's a good idea. I think that the building inspector requires some training and certification, whereas the zoning enforcement officer does not. So to do a backup, we had been through this before, but we did hire someone to do backup. And through the village coffers, we trained this person, and the person eventually left and, with our training, to other municipalities and, I think, on to the state level at this point in time. But, so that would be something to look into as far as the training goes of, you know, a backup building inspector, because it does require a lot of training also, on, on the, on the job training as well. And the code enforcement officer obviously needs to know the building code or the zoning code. And the future may hold a lot of responsibility as we go forward, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think with the advent of the sewer, part of what we're seeing is there's more activity, and I think we're only going to see more, based on that. Interesting, and I think the notion of the village supporting someone getting the qualifications is something that I'm, I am supportive of. I am also supportive of an agreement that says, with this being paid for, for you, that you would need to stay with the village for a period of time and have a, you know, if they leave after a certain period of time, there would be a certain return of cost just to, so that we don't train someone who then leaves the next day.
Because as you mentioned before, there is a scarcity of building code inspectors, and they're a hot-ticket item amongst this area, so.
Yeah.
Where many serving part-time positions in multiple municipalities, so.
Any other?
Do we know how many complaints? I know that you were talking about the permits. Have there been more complaints than, have those also increased? Sorry.
I know recently there was a flurry of them. So I would, I don't have the backup data on that. My impression is, and again, I, you know, I've been in this position about a year and a half, so I would say there's been more in the last few months than there were a year ago.
And they take a lot of hours too, right? Because you're, you're dealing with people that are upset, and you have to sort of, so there's?
Well, it's, it's first going, when, when there's a complaint, often it's anonymous. It's, you have to go investigate, you have to take a look at, and then you follow up and, 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 yeah. So it does, it definitely does take, definitely does take time. Yeah.
So we're going to look for people, we're going to put an ad out in Indeed or whatever job outlet sourcing there is available?
Yeah, we've, we've actually been very successful with Indeed. We're in the, in the process, in the process of, I think it's, it's known that Ray is going to be retiring. And so we have, we have our new bookkeeper, who's a wonderful addition. And then we are, we are hiring a, in the process of hiring a payroll clerk. And we actually have several very, very good candidates that we're very excited about. So we've, we've actually been very successful on Indeed, so that would be logically where, where we would put that ad, yes. And, and, and see what, see what comes in.
I think there's a need, you know, just spending time up there on Fridays and listening to what, you know, the docket is, and even on the boards, you know, and, you know, someone strong and knowledgeable of zoning, just the procedures alone, and also the village code, but, you know, just procedural stuff on, on what the boards have to do would be very helpful for both LARA and the planning zoning board, so.
Yeah, so I, I don't know, do I need a motion to add this position? Yes, so I need a motion to add this position.
I would, yeah, you said so moved?
Go ahead.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to add a part-time zoning enforcement officer.
Great, second?
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Awesome, thank you. And then we have budget adjustments. We all have that in our packets, right?
So?
You weren't. Oh, bad me. Okay.
Is it this one?
No, 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 I have it. I did it. So... That's true.
We haven't get it?
Yeah, the second page, I think, is just the signature part. So I do have a handful of budget adjustments. I'm thinking I should run make copies, because there are a number of them, rather than just read them out loud.
Let me go make some copies.
Well, I can go make copies. All right, why don't, we'll table this for right now, and we'll, we'll come back to it. And I'll, I'll run out and make some copies. Actually, can I, can I ask, can I impose upon you? Thank you.
Can I do one?
Five. Thank you very much. Okay. Just a note that the next meeting is our workshop meeting on February 23rd. The main topic there will be the budget. And, and then our next village board meeting is March 13th. And with that, we can go to the treasurer's report. To Ray.
Yes, the treasurer's report. Our account balances as of the 31st of January 2023 are as follows. General fund, $811,477.35. Water fund, $289,920.57. Payroll clearing account, $31,263.56. Sewer fund, $55,915.71. Hardscrabble, $9,160.60. Village green, $7,674.32. Health insurance, $6,890.28. And petty cash, $60.83. The reserve checking balances, a little higher than the last couple of months because interest rates have increased. The fire department, $5,043.73. Police, $14,615.32. USDA, $134,310.49. Highway, $26,239.11. Snow reserve, $3,286.07. Tower reserve, $17,747.02. Unemployment, $4,553.26. Court reserve, $3,305.22. And the office reserve, $974.47. Our monthly expenses for the month of January were as follows. General fund, $162,937.72. Water fund, $22,163.71. Payroll clearing account, $2,802.15. And sewer, $75,905.46. And that concludes the treasurer's report.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna, what's that? We need a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
So moved.
Thank you, Brent, second?
Second.
Thank you, Declan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So you now, you now have all the budget adjustments in front of you. For the general fund, there's one revenue item, it's the other health department, it is, I miscalculated that one, so it's actually going to be higher than, than, than what we had. Under expense, we have court miscellaneous going up $200, court printing going down $200, law miscellaneous going up 200, law zoning going down 200, police supplies going up 2,000, police traffic control going down 2,000, celebrations going up 500, community beautification going up 200, disability, which is disability and cancer coverage for the fire department, that goes up 400, $500. And then digital communication goes down 400, and with, which evens, evens it all out. And these are, these are reflecting actual, actual costs as they're coming in.
Can I ask a question?
You may.
The legal settlement, is that what we talked about at the last executive session?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Any other questions on general fund?
Yep, sorry, it might be, I'm just not very good at math. But didn't celebrations and community beautification go up? And then what balanced out?
So the, under revenue, so the 800, the 800 is offsets?
From other health department?
Yes, so that's, that's actually an increase in revenue.
Oh, okay.
So it?
And that went towards celebrations and community?
That covers, yep, that covered, plus the 400 reduction in digital communication.
Okay.
So community beautification, that's the village green account, or the tree removal?
So there's shade tree is a separate, shade tree is a separate budget item.
Yeah.
And that's the, that's the one, I believe, that the grant was going to go into.
Should, should the, I'm sorry, pardon my ignorance, should the health department budget go down if the money's actually going towards something else?
No, we are going to receive more, so the, we are going to receive more than what is currently in the budget.
Oh, okay.
So this is reflecting, reflecting that more will come in than, than was originally expected.
Okay, but then it needs to be transferred, right?
No.
No?
It just goes into that line item.
So community, community beautification is the village green tree planting?
So is that the one that's going to get the?
Yeah, that'll get the $1,000 eventually.
Oh.
The reimbursement from the New York State.
Because the shade tree line item is also over budget. I thought that was the one.
Yeah, shade tree, we're about $800 over budget on that one.
That's why I thought that was the one where?
Yeah.
Where the, the? That's why I thought that was the one where, where the, the grant money was gonna go.
So the community beautification will get the 1,000 from the New York Urban Forestry Council grant, and then shade tree contractual, because of the semi-emergency situations that we've had with some trees, we're over budget on that, about 7%, but. So it's about $800 right now, over.
So, well, we are currently over on the community beautification. Why don't I, why don't I leave this as is, and then when the money comes in, we'll make an, we'll make another adjustment to make it work.
Okay.
Is that all right?
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions on general fund? All right, water fund, revenue, we are, we, our current budget for, revenue budget for interest and penalties is 2,500. We've actually exceeded that number, so I'm adjusting, adding $2,000 to that budget line item. And then under expense, generator contractual, that's, that's basically fuel to the generator, increase by 200, tools, increase by 300. Water, water purification, we've had to do a few more testing than I had originally budgeted, so I added 2,000 for that. And then contract extras, those are not coming in, as, there are not as many of those as I thought there would be, so I've reduced that budget by 500, which totals us out. Any, any questions on that? Okay, hearing none, may I have a motion to accept the budget adjustments?
Resolution four.
Resolution number four.
So moved.
Oh, sorry. Meeting of the Village of Red Hook was convened in public session at the village hall.
Whereas.
Whereas, sorry. Resolution for budget adjustments to village general fund, general and water fund. Whereas the village board desires to amend the general fund and water fund budget to reflect current information and expenses, whereas the village board makes the following budget adjustments are requested to be made, that sentence makes no sense, sorry. We'll make it, make it be English. As, as we, as, as we just laid out, may I have a motion to accept resolution number four?
I make a motion with the amendments?
The amendments of adding the water fund?
Amendments to the wording of the whereas's.
Thank you.
Okay.
Second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Charlie. Any, any further discussion?
This is still resolution number four?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And before I go on to my reports, I was reminded for ADP for the, oh, gosh, what's it called? ADP Time Kiosk App. I actually do need to sign a contract for that, so I need a motion to authorize me to sign this contract.
I would like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the ADP contract.
Kiosk, thank you.
Kiosk.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mel Corca, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. All right, now on to my reports, starting with the police department. For the month of January, there were a total of 292 incidents. In the Village of Red Hook, there were 183. In the town of Red Hook, there were 95. In the Village of Tivoli, there were 14. And I just want to note, in the Village of Red Hook, it includes, it includes things like foot patrol, lockouts, if someone's locked out of their car, we help out. It includes welfare checks, traffic control, as well as disabled vehicle, burglary, fraud.
Drug take backs.
Drug take backs, fingerprinting, to, just to give you a sense of what's in those incidents. Separately, there were 117 water tower security checks. Under uniform traffic tickets, there were 103. The village, there were 59 in the Village of Red Hook, 42 in the town of Red Hook, and two in the Village of Tivoli. Parking tickets, there were six in the Village of Red Hook, three in the Village of Tivoli, and one in the town of Red Hook. And arrests, there were six, four in the Village of Red Hook, two in the town of Red Hook, and none in the Village of Tivoli. Okay.
May I ask a question?
You may.
Is a foot patrol automatically an incident, or only if there's an incident on a foot patrol?
It is listed as an incident when it is done. It does not require.
So if they just go for a walk, it's listed as an incident?
Yes, though, when they go on a foot patrol, it's not, it, what it includes, it's usually done in the evening, later on in the evening, and often what they'll do is they'll go on a particular route and check businesses, and they will, they actually will leave a little sticker saying, police have checked, have checked your business, because the businesses aren't open at that point, and so they wouldn't know. But there is a particular route that they are, that the officer is given to, to check and, and make sure that everything is okay.
Okay, thank you.
And all these incidents are connected to someone saying, I did this, and there's a report sort of in what they did, right? That's the whole point. That's why they're logged this way.
It's that they were, it's that they were assigned to a foot patrol, so they, it's, they, they did a foot patrol, and it has a, you know, where they did, et cetera. Yes.
And then all of the school resource officer days are listed also in the village total, right?
Yes.
Okay.
There are some in the town, because, because Mill Road is in the town.
Oh, okay, but, but foot patrols and school resource officers would increase our, our total.
They are included in the total of incidents, yes, yes.
Would it make sense, being that they're, they're own client, to have them in a separate line, the way that we did with Village of Tivoli, or does it make more sense to?
We could, we could. I think as you and I have spoken, I like to come up with a chart that actually gives a little bit more detail, and just trying to figure out how to organize the different items, working on that. But yeah, that's, that, that would be reasonable. Oh, thank you. All right, the fire department. So in the month of December, there, in the village, there were 24 incidents. 21 of them were emergency medical service calls. I have my own chart, where'd I put my chart? EMS calls, medical assist, that sort of thing, that was 21 out of the 24. One was a fire incident, was a cooking fire, and two were alarms, there was smoke alarm or a false alarm, and that was the month of December. And then outside of the village, there were a total of 77 incidents. 46 of them were EMS, EMS calls, 20 of them were alarms, six of them were assisting someone, a service call, a person in distress, four of them were hazardous condition, and three of them were a good intent call, a smoke scare, something of that nature. One was dispatched and canceled, for example. And that is the fire report for the month of December. And that is all I have, and so now it's on to Deputy Mayor Kovalchuk.
Thank you. I'll start with the Village Green Committee's monthly report for January of 2023. Current balances of the Village Greens' related budget accounts as of January 31st are as follows, community beautification, we are in the, in the red by $103.22, total is $5,103.22. The shade tree contractual, $12,800, we're running a deficit of $800 there. And the Village Green checking account is $7,674.32, as mentioned by Ray during his report. There were no Village Green Committee meetings held during the month of January, and anyone interested in donating, I'm sorry, in having a tree or trees planted on their adjacent village street or New York State right of ways, volunteering for planting days, or sponsoring the Village Green Committee beautification project, may contact David Pearson, the village clerk, or myself. The Village of Highway, the Village of Red Hook Highway Department, monthly report for January, the Village Highway Department is not picking up brush leaves or yard debris during the winter season. Brush pickup services will resume in the spring of 2023. The Village's seasonal all-night parking law is currently in effect as of November 1st through March 31st of 2023. No parking is permitted on village streets from 11:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., and on New York State highways, which would be Broadway and Market, from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. When snow and/or ice removal operations are underway, any vehicle parked or abandoned on any street may be removed by or under the direction of the Red Hook Police Department or any responding law enforcement agency. Costs associated with vehicle towing and storage will be charged to the vehicle's owners. The Highway Department will cause their property owners to remove streetside athletic equipment, such as basketball hoops, garbage receptacles, and other temporary obstacles from the sides of the streets to prevent damage during snow removal operations. We've been very lucky this winter so far, and a great February as, as of today, so.
Knock on wood.
But still, keep, keep the sides of the streets clear, we never know when.
We'll get hammered in March.
The next big one will come. The owner and/or occupant of every building or lot with an adjoining sidewalk shall remove snow and ice within 24 hours of a snowstorm, and at the direction of the mayor and/or Board of Trustees, the Highway Department may remove snow or ice left unclaimed at a cost of $2 per linear foot. This cost will be assessed and collected with the next tax levy. There was no revenue generated from the sale of scrap metal by the village during the month of January. Total revenue generated from the sale of scrap metal in fiscal year 2022, 2023 is Since inception of the scrap metal recycling program in September of 2007, $46,578.46 has been generated. I think within the next month, we'll be seeing a pretty big increase in the, this year's fiscal. I got a call last night, someone had a, a freeze out of some gen, or radiators that all blew up. So there's a lot of very heavy scrap metal waiting to be picked up, and we should generate a lot of revenue from cast iron, so we're looking forward to that. And proceeds from this program go toward the purchase of tools and equipment for the Village Highway, Water, and Materials Management Departments. Residents and businesses interested in donating scrap metal may contact the Village Highway Department at 845-758-8600, or the Village Clerk's Office. And Highway personnel will assist property owners by picking up scrap metal upon request. The intermunicipal task force and Red Hook Infrastructure Monthly Report for January, start with the Red Hook Sewer Project. Meetings were held on January 13th and 27th in the Red Hook Village Building. I'm not gonna read all these things, but I'll give you the latest update as of January So as of the 27th, 101 tanks, including 91 septic tanks and eight grease traps have been placed. 47 septic tanks and 10 grease traps remain to be placed. 73 properties have completed systems and are hooked up to the wastewater treatment plant. So that number has increased from before, we're seeing, it's getting there. So I think we're still anticipating substantial completion, hopefully sometimes by the end of March, maybe a little bit later, with final completion anticipated for May. So there, this will all be on the village website, I believe, all the, so you can all look at this, it's, it's pretty detailed and gives you a good idea. On February 6th through 8th, the 95th Annual Meeting of the New York Water Environment Association was held in New York City. Catherine Sarah, who's our engineer from CT Mail, presented 20 years in the making, sanitary sewer in the Village of Red Hook. The presentation outlined over two decades of work to bring public sanitary sewer to the village, with a focus on the unique characteristics of the project. So, we're famous, at least.
We should get her to give, to give that presentation here.
So that was pretty, pretty nice to hear. The Village of Red Hook Water Distribution System Maintenance and Improvement Project, the meetings were held on January 6th and 27th in the Village Building. We met Wes C. 3ND, who's our operator, and members of Delaware Engineering. We are getting close to beginning work on our WEA grant project, the $1.8 million project. We reviewed the status of that, including this schematic design for the SCADA system, and that's the control systems at the well field. Delaware Engineering is currently responding to comments from the New York State Department of Health regarding the exterior rehabilitation of the Tower Street Elevated Water Storage Tank, and preliminary designs and water distribution system upgrades of Cherry and Grave Street. We discussed schedules to inspect the former Red Hook Commons wastewater treatment plant for upgrades, improvements, and repairs, now that the new plant is up and running. We're operating actually two plants, you know, the existing Red Hook Commons treatment plant was donated to the village, and also the new plant, we do have the ability now to shut down the Red Hook Commons treatment plant, divert everything to the new plant, and make some repairs, much needed repairs on the Red Hook Commons treatment plant. We also discussed testing procedures at the Firehouse Lane Water Treatment Plant to determine cause and remedy for reported cloudiness in the drinking water noticed by property owners and water customers. And we also reviewed requirements for the New York reports regarding efforts to address potential sewer spills. On the intermunicipal task slide, both Charlie and I sit on that. The committee has been dormant for well over a year, and there were no meetings of the task force held during the month of January. Some of the committees I sit on in the town, we've been very quiet as well. The Town of Red Hook Zoning Review Committee, no meetings. Salt Hill Watershed Community, no meetings on that. Northern Dungeons Alliance Executive Committee, there were no meetings. The Village of Red Hook Zoning Review Committee, no meetings, but I think we're gonna ramp up here soon. And the Community Preservation Fund Advisory Board, no meetings in the month of January. The current balance of the community beautification fund as of January 31st is $3,475,618.79. And that is all I have.
Wonderful, thank you. Trustee Lang?
Yes, good evening. I am vaguely prepared. Let's start off with the Materials Management Report for the month of January. So the village collected 1.63 tons of commingled, 0.56 tons of cardboard, 1.06 tons of paper, for a total recycling of 3.25 tons. We also collected 9.72 tons of garbage, and we sold $3,520 worth of tags. So that was the revenue side of things. The costs for that garbage disposal was $1,069.20, and then you add in the fuel surcharge and you, which is $114.94, and then unfortunately, you add in another $2.42 for contaminated recycling, which is a shame. So there were clearly some, some items in that recycling collection that should not have been there, or were not in the right state. So total costs came to $1,186.56. So total costs came to $1,186.56. And that's the Materials Management Report.
Just a just a note, I was looking at this report and December was really low in terms of the garbage that was collected. Thought that was curious.
I have a question. If there was present wrapping paper in the paper, would that count as a contamination? Because it's like a lot of it's not recyclable, right? That kind of.
Right, yep. That's that's how it goes. A lot of that wrapping paper is can't be recycled with the rest of the paper.
I think a lot of it too has still has to do with pizza boxes and coffee cups and that kind of thing, so.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
And the highway guys have been really good about trying to catch it when they they do, right? They even have a notice they made?
Especially, yeah.
Yeah, which is great.
Right. You know, I mean, every so often, things get through. But I think generally speaking, it's they've been doing good. The residents using our our disposal facilities have been doing a good job.
I follow the UCR on Instagram, and they were talking about how any plastic items that are smaller than a tennis ball are also contaminants because they can they can hurt the equipment.
Jam up the equipment, yeah.
Really? Yeah.
Yogurt cup smaller than a tennis ball?
I don't know technically, but it really depends on the yogurt cup. But caps, bottle caps, that's one of the, you know.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's why they don't want you to throw the caps in with the bottles.
Oh.
Just another thing you have to.
Yikes.
Thanks, Charlie.
Be mindful of. Yes, next time we'll be watching.
Can they be attached or like?
If they're the same material, I think they they're supposed to be attached. So if it's a plastic cap, plastic, yeah.
Okay.
Well, we'll figure it out somehow.
Heard it here first.
There is the the recycling calendar actually has some good information on it.
Yes, it does.
It is both on the website, and there are extra copies here in Village Hall for anyone who's interested.
And Akra on Instagram. That's right, right? Okay.
Excellent. Well, I also have the Village of Red Hook Water Treatment Facilities Monthly Report. So during the month of January, the water treatment facility treated 6,171,100 gallons, which is an average of 199,100 gallons per day. So that's, you know, just under 200,000 gallons a day. That is as low as we've been in the past 12 months, which I think is a good sign.
Yeah, and actually, I looked up the amount that the amount in January of 2022 was 7,799,000.
Yeah, so considerably more. Yes, I keep meaning to look back at the years and see how our averages have have been trending and, you know, it is trending downwards, so.
Yeah, I think there've been a number of leaks that have been fixed.
Yep.
Maybe people are conserving more water, I'm not sure. But certainly, there's been a fair amount of work this past year in in fixing leaks.
Yes, and I mean, and you can see that I think that's clearly made a difference. We also sent off three bacteriological samples for testing, and they all came back clean, so no detectable coliform or E. coli. And then during the month of January, the the water treatment plant used 75 gallons of sodium hypochlorite. That average daily use is 2.4 gallons per day. And I mean, that's the other benefit of lower water usage is that it means we use less sodium hypochlorite, and that's lowers our costs. I would read the summaries of issues on the back, but I forgot my glasses and it's too small.
I would add, you're talking about the deficiencies in the report. I I think those actually might be out of date, so.
Good.
For next month, I will be asking C3ND to ensure that they've actually reviewed. Because I think some of these have been addressed. All right, thank you. Thank you, Charlie. Trustee Kirval.
So Red Hook Together's monthly meeting was held on February 2nd, 2023, at the historic Red Hooks in the Morphin. Various community leaders and organization representatives announced upcoming annual events. Historic Red Hook has a soup night, March 4th, and on June 3rd, they are launching the new Then and Now Festival. The Community Center has a chili event on March 24th. Rotary has the Apple Blossom Festival on May 13th. Four Corners has a Spring Farm Festival and Seedling fundraiser on May 6th. The VFW has a to-be-named Youth Community Day scheduled for June 10th.
Can I just interrupt and add that Patty Bowman of Holy Cow is doing Ice Cream for Breakfast fundraiser April 1st and 15th?
I'll be there.
And breakfast, ice cream for breakfast is the best.
And that's to benefit someone?
St. Jude's.
Okay. Wonderful. The Red Hook Town Economic Development Committee, due to its scheduling conflicts, I was only able to attend this week's meeting, which was on February 9th. There was not an official quorum, and there hasn't been an official quorum since the November meeting. Discussion ranged around the proposed purchase of the Cooking Ham Farm Parcels by the town and a future visit from the Duchess County Tourism Board. Also, we got to see a presentation from reclaimed motel owner Kendra Sinclair on a new project she is launching called the Hudson Valley Nonprofit Collab. She is in the process of planning an initial conference for Red Hooks nonprofits to connect them with resources and guidance from nonprofit experts. Village of Red Hook Communications Committee. The Communications Committee meets every first Wednesday of the month at 1:30 PM in the Village Hall Conference Room. Our meeting this month focused on creating the list of renters, postal addresses, as well as covering last month's meeting goals. We are also continuing to coordinate with our website platform service to implement the language and accessibility app, Recite Me. We hope to have that launched on the site soon. The Village of Red Hook Hard Scrapple Events Committee. The Events Committee would like to announce that Hard Scrapple Day will be September 23rd, 2023. Also taking place this year will be Three Neighbors Nights, tentatively scheduled for May 19th, July 14th, and September 22nd. More information will be forthcoming. The Village of Red Hook Human Relations Committee. The committee meets every first Thursday of the month at 7:00 PM in the Village Hall Conference Room. The Inside Out We Are Neighbors Public Art Project continues to be coordinated. Teams of committee members will be volunteering to take portraits at various partner sites around the village. The schedule of sites and times will be announced via various various partners. Also, the development of a brochure for community members that may experience or witness bias or harassment incidents is still underway. Red Hook Public Library Report. The library continues its search for the Director of the Red Hook Public Library as it has entered into its interview process. A thank you reception was held earlier this evening to thank Dawn Jardine for her many years of service at the library. I will update the board as soon as they announce their decision. That's it.
Great, thank you. And trustee Dewar McNulty.
Sure, okay, so I have zoning and planning, Building Department, and Public Spaces Initiative. Let's see, zoning and planning, there were four building permits issued, one certificate of occupancy, one certificate of compliance, three municipal searches, four orders to remedy, zero stop work orders, zero court appearances, nine fire inspections, and three complaints. That was in the month of January. Let's see, the Planning Board met on January 12th. Should I describe what they met about?
You can, I mean, all of all of the site plans, it looks like they were tabled tabled to February 9th, so.
They were all tabled to February 9th. Various site plans. And the Zoning Board of Appeals did not have a meeting in January due to no agenda. Okay, the Building Department totaled $4,700 in the month of January via building permits, site plans, signage applications, certificate of occupancy searches, fire inspections, demolition permits, and that's it. Yep. The Public Spaces Initiative met on Saturday, January 28th, at Elmandorf Historic Site. Elizabeth Tatum of Historic Elmandorf asked for assistance creating a pollinator garden on Elmandorf's Back Green. So that's under consideration as a spring and summer project. Volunteers are welcome, sounds like a lot of fun. There's also discussion about putting little pollinator plantings around the Red Hook art boxes. As to which art boxes, I think that's still to be determined. And the PSI is planning a second annual spring pollinator event at the Red Hook Community Center, tentatively on May 21st. This should feature an informational table with Cornell Cooperative Extension, Master Gardeners, a pollinator plant seed sharing, egg carton planting for children, seed ball activity with Red Hook High School Sunrise Movement Chapter, and live music.
Declan, do you know where where the thought is, is that, were they thinking of doing that at the community center?
That would be at the community center again, yeah. So primarily outdoors, but it sounds like there might be an indoor activity too, which is trickier logistically, but I don't know, they'll figure it out. If you're interested, I don't know, stay tuned to your village board meetings or contact the village clerk to get in touch with the PSI. And then the Historic Elmandorf invited the PSI to to participate in Red Hook's Then and Now exhibit or event on June 3rd to showcase the role of pollinator plants in the local landscape historically and today. If you have questions about personal pollinator projects and want to connect with your neighbors or you'd like to volunteer on one of the public projects, you can reach out to the village clerk, and she'll put you in touch with Ash Bradley Ricard, who's Chair of the PSI, or you can reach out to me at dwyer-mcnulty@redhookvillage@redhooknewyorkvillage.org for information about that. February meeting time, date, and location are to be determined. So, yeah, good luck, residents of Red Hook.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
Are there any plans to do any of these pollinator gardens on village property? Because these are, there is?
Yeah, they were, you want to go ahead and answer that?
No, I think you'd be more articulate about it.
We're looking at doing some work in the in the parking lot area and Abraham's Park as well. So we were trying to work with the Old Dutch Village Garden Club. A shared project around the Abraham's Bench seating area, but also definitely looking at probably the front of the municipal parking lot on Broadway and maybe some of the beds on Prince Street as well.
Because I know that there was a plan last year to do that, but I don't think it actually went through, so I'm just.
Yeah, it's still a plan at this point in time.
Okay, great, just because it seems like they're expanding to do it on another private nonprofit lawn instead of on village, you know, so. Just want to keep it, you know, in the village.
All right, noted, thanks, Mal Corca.
Plenty of opportunity here in the village.
It's true. We can, we can use a lot of brightening up, so.
It's true.
Stop mowing so much.
Is that it?
That's everything, thank you.
Thank you. We are at a point of general business. Does anybody have anything they would like to discuss that we haven't discussed already?
I had one question, which is, I saw in the the vouchers that we are paying C3ND like for an emergency rate when the the service, when the alarm goes off. Is that going to be wrapped up into the sewer service fee moving forward? Are we going to have like a certain amount of those alarms in the plan?
Well, so first, first of all, right now, because we're still under construction, emergency calls, we are, we are directing to Carver Construction and/or CT Mail. Because that should be covered under them.
Got it.
Because it came in after hours is why it, why it went to C3ND.
Yeah.
But that is a, that is a reasonable question, and we have, we have not finalized the contract with with C3ND yet, and so I think that's a, that's a great point to include that, include that in the mix.
Right, thank you.
And just a quick update, too. We did ask them about that, and there were, I think, two alarms that went off that we responded to, and they were both for the same reason. So when the tank is initially hooked up, there's a level of water that it has to maintain so the floats, there's floats in there that triggered the pump. If there's not enough water, the floats won't, won't properly function, so the alarm goes off signaling that there's a low level of water in the tank. So that's what the two calls were about. So once the tank filled up with the water.
Got it.
It was all fine, so there's, we were concerned that'd be malfunction with the pumps, but it was just the fact that the tanks had not been filled up enough to kind of stabilize the floats in the, in the tank.
So we shouldn't be anticipating that this is going to be happening so much, yeah?
No.
Because it's.
And just to clarify, there's a low float, so that if it goes below, that's when it triggers the alarm to say, woo, it's too low. There's a high float that triggers the pump to kick in.
Got it.
Because it's gotten to a certain level, and it's like, whoop, let's pump it out.
Makes sense, thank you.
Shouldn't. Oh, if it's not pumping, well, yes, right, but it should be pumping. It's gonna pump.
Everything's working fine at this point, isn't it?
Yes, yes. Any other questions, general business? Opportunity for public comment? Anyone on Zoom? No, I don't think so. Okay, no public comment. I have nothing for executive session. I need a motion to pay bills after audit.
So moved.
Thank you, second?
I second that.
Thank you, Declan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And so now I think Brent, you you can do your thing.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting, February 13th, 2023.
Second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Charlie. I'd just like to note, it's almost as short as Brent's meeting, but not quite.
Nicely done.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.